Welcome to Minot Talk. Good afternoon.
A little bit late today.
We're late, we're late for a very important date. No time to say hello, goodbye. We're late, we're late, we're late. But we're here and we made it.
Interesting. Sounds like you've been picking up singing.
I am a talented singer of the highest order, clearly. You can catch me at karaoke like once a year somewhere in town.
Well, that's scary.
It is a fantastic time.
We will try to our best to avoid that, but we have a jam packed agenda once again.
Something like that.
That's all we do.
Speaking of agendas, haha, we're going to be talking about the city of Minot's city council meeting agenda.
Right, because that did not happen Monday night.
No, yesterday was a holiday and it was also inauguration day. We once again have a new president.
But do you think they really, the reason why they really delayed it was for the college football national championship?
Of course, everyone was watching Ohio State Notre Dame, right?
No, because I wasn't.
I had all the plans to and I got busy after work last night and.
That's good. Get those ratings down.
Yeah, forgot to.
Maybe they'll get rid of college football.
Saw Ohio State beat them pretty handily and that was the end of that.
That was the end. So what's on the agenda?
Got a few different things. We're going to talk about a very big pardon that Biden announced right at the very end of his term yesterday.
He was doing some things yesterday.
He was, and we'll talk about some stuff Trump got accomplished yesterday. He had a very effect or yeah, effective and jam packed first day. It was a lot happened there and then we'll end off with kind of previewing tonight's city council meeting. We'll try and take a feel for how the meeting's going to go. I think it's going to be a long one. I've yet to be right, so we'll see how that plays out on this one.
Yeah, when you told me you thought it was going to be a long one, I was like, oh, you're trying to jinx the city council meeting.
I would never do something like that. I always go with my objective gut feeling and it's literally been wrong like every time.
Exactly. That's why, that's why this is definitely a jinx.
I would never do such a thing. I swears it. But do you know who Joe Biden pardoned yesterday?
Well.
There's a bunch of people. Those are the notable ones and that's what a lot of people know, but that's not the one we're here to talk about today.
Yeah, well, I actually know the one that you're about to talk about.
We're going to talk about Leonard Peltier and his, it wasn't actually a full pardon because a pardon implies that you are exonerated of the charges you're offered. He would never really deny that he was involved in what happened with his situation, which we can kind of dive into that a little bit.
Basically, he said, yeah, I shot a gun, just my bullet didn't hit the guy.
Exactly. It was, so yeah, in the early year, mid nineteen seventies on the Pine Ridge Reservation in South Dakota. Two FBI agents were attempting to questionably fulfill, fulfill a warrant for someone's arrest. And when they did so, before they could do so, they were attacked and shot and killed and not just killed, but executed, it seems like. Very brutally and the only person of the multiple that were clearly involved, they ever tried or brought to justice was Leonard Peltier. He has been adamant that he's never denied involvement in the crime or the being involved in any of the actions that happened. He's just denied killing anyone on especially being the one to deliver the killing blows and that has been a talk of people saying he's a political prisoner. There's been all kinds of accusations in the late eighties. He was associated heavily with Nelson Mandela.
Oh, nice.
And it's, it's been a talk, I know at the end of Obama's term, there was people wanting to commute a sentence and there's been, he was just denied bail a year ago in twenty twenty four. And even about two weeks ago, the FBI director advised against the commute, any kind of pardon or commutation of his sentence. And at about eleven thirty yesterday morning, right before Biden's end of his term, he announced he was going to commute Leonard Peltier. And so he will still be serve out his final life, years of his life sentence, but he will be allowed to do so from house arrest.
How many, how many pardons did Biden give?
Oh gosh, so many. There was a lot yesterday. I mean, he obviously the preemptive pardons is something that I think is setting a horrible precedent for the presidential seat, whether it be Anthony Fauci, his family, I, even his son Hunter to an extent. It's, it's a number of people that it feels when four years from now, we see Trump giving preemptive pardons to his extended family and people raise a hay about it. I just feel like it's something that could allow for a really bad path for us to go down.
Right. And like, will he try to push it to the point where he pardons himself?
That could happen frankly, I could.
Although it's already, he's already somewhat protected by the Supreme Court now, but.
By them issuing the, an act of the president can't be prosecuted or whatever, roughly it was worded, yeah.
Here's some numbers for you. Bill Clinton, four, four hundred and fifty nine pardons, George Bush, two hundred, Barack Obama, one thousand nine hundred and twenty seven. Donald Trump. And this is a two hundred and thirty seven in his first term, but he just pardoned.
Over fifteen hundred.
Yeah, with the, with the January sixth.
More in depth, yes, and later.
So that's a total of seventeen, which is crazy because that's a total of seventeen hundred still, which is still lower than Obama's.
Exactly.
And he scrapes by Biden, which was eight thousand sixty four. But there's a caveat. He, that includes sixty five hundred that are pardoned for marijuana possession. So if you take that off, then it cuts that number down.
Significantly.
Yeah, down to more around fifteen sixty four. So.
And one thing Biden gets a lot of flack for, I'm not saying I'm defending him, but he commuted a lot of life sentences to people that were in prison that were going to be put to death. He never, he didn't pardon them. He just commuted them to life in prison rather than the death sentence. So there, those people like that aren't being released from prison. Those ones are just, they're just not going to be.
There was a couple that didn't accept it.
Yeah, a couple are there attempting or trying not to accept it. They're like putting a lawsuit against, they're forth against the someone. I did see that. There's like two people in different states that didn't want it and they want to be put to death. So that's interesting. We'll have to keep a very loose eye, see how that plays out. But it was a eventful last day for Biden.
It was.
Did you get a chance to watch any of the inauguration ceremony?
Not really. So what were your thoughts on it?
It went, it happened. It was all the pomp and circumstances.
This is, this is what's fantastic to me, that I interrupt you because it's that fantastic. When Carrie Underwood had to sing America the Beautiful and there was no track that played.
The audio didn't work.
That just made Kyler feel good.
It did.
Kyler was like, see, I'm not the only one.
Alone at the biggest, best stage in the world.
They should have all this fixed, all this worked out.
That's what happens when you go inside to the, inside the Capitol with like two days of heads up.
Should I have stayed outside?
I, I don't see why not. It wasn't, I, okay, coming from the very biased North Dakotan in me, I don't think it was that cold.
If you look historically, it wasn't that cold, I believe.
It was, it was in the, there had been numerous colder ones and I believe Reagan in eighty five was even colder than this one. So I am a little disappointed it took place inside. There are, if you want me to go down a very quick little rabbit hole.
Yeah.
There's a multitude of conspiracy theories out there onto why it was put inside.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Do, do you think it was because?
I think it was because they didn't want to be outside in the cold weather.
Really?
I do.
You don't think it was for protection at all?
Maybe. I won't completely say it wasn't, but I don't think.
I don't know what all the conspiracy theories are.
I heard that there was threats of drone attacks.
Okay.
And other things like that. And again, I won't completely rule it out. Who knows? The government likes to skew angles of storylines and things. So never say never, but it happened inside. The whole thing went through.
Stu says, how can you pardon someone that hasn't committed a crime? Yeah, this is the money question that a lot of people want to know the answer to is if you pardon someone that is innocent, does that make them guilty?
Does that imply guilt?
And.
Right. It feels like it probably could imply guilt, even if it doesn't. I, I guess his, what his thought was, he wanted to avoid their prosecution for anything.
Right.
But just by allowing them to have said pardon, I, I personally feel like it has at least a semblance of implied guilt.
The one with Fauci, like you can see that, you can, because like, okay, there's a chance he's going to go at.
Fauci hard.
Yeah. So, so like, I can get that argument. The one that was really weird though was his family.
Yeah, like, and not just Hunter.
Right, because Hunter was already taken care of.
But like his sister, his brother in law, a couple like his, his brother Jimmy, a couple other ones. And yeah, those were the questionable ones.
Yeah, that, that was really weird.
I thought, I wasn't sure if he was going to do it or not. And then, yeah, obviously he went and did it right at the end, which classic, classic move.
Yeah. No, I, I, I kind of have a suspicion. I guess it's a conspiracy theory since that's what you're going to call, call it, but that perhaps it was a little bit of a security thing.
And see, I can, I, I want to lean towards it was them not liking the cold, but I won't rule it out, especially because of what the last year's brought.
Right.
And the why, they've secured the capital how many times over the last, how many hundred years? But on the flip side of that, Washington and especially the grounds of the Capitol is an incredibly open space. It is a very vast space from what it looks like. You can fit hundreds of thousands of people on the Capitol lawn.
Right.
It, it is one of those things that would, and there obviously were thousands upon thousands of people that were in Washington for the event. Look at the Capitol.
Right. When did they move it? At what point did they move it?
Thursday or Friday.
So it was pretty late.
It was, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a ton of heads up. It was only a couple of days notice.
Yeah. And I guess that could lead to weather.
It's one of those things. It could.
Can't trust a weather forecast a week out.
Well.
Government should be able to.
Aren't you supposed to be able to in that part of the country? It's supposed to be more accurate.
Buddy. Yeah, interesting for sure.
Then Trump had, so with the peaceful transition of power unfolding.
Senator Amy Klobuchar so elegantly stated out.
Had to, had to emphasize a couple peaceful transition of power. Who also, I just have to caveat this every time I talk about her. Her father was a longtime beat writer for the Minnesota Vikings and was one of the best writers in the, back in like fifty years ago. But whole different ballgame there, but.
Guess who else, guess who got beat?
Amy.
The Vikings. That did happen, by the way.
Wow. So did the, hey, so did the Lions. They lost too.
Does that make you feel better?
I mean, a little, but then the Rams lost and now my Super Bowl predictions out the window.
And so sad, in my opinion, sadly, who's going to be the ones that win it?
It's going to be the Chiefs.
Potentially, or the commanders.
I would love to see the commanders.
I wouldn't.
You're an Eagles fan though, aren't you?
No, I'm not. Who's left?
Washington, Philly in the NFC, then Kansas City and Buffalo. I'm cheering for Buffalo.
Yeah, it's gotta be Buffalo. I don't like any of those teams. Buffalo, though, I don't mind.
I, I don't dislike Buff, I don't dislike Washington, but I'm cheering for Buffalo.
I don't like Washington for some reason. I don't know why.
I liked Jaden, I'm an LSU fan. I liked Jaden Daniels in college, so now seeing him.
Dude, you jokester. He is not in.
He finished his career at LSU.
He played like, how many years? Two? One?
One, technically two, but yeah, he really only played one.
One year, yeah, that's a tiger, man. No, that is, that is an Arizona State Sun Devil running around.
Hey, he, he left ASU.
He did.
To a better program.
No, he didn't.
To bolster his draft.
Who, I have a question. Who was in the playoff? Was it LSU? Did they make it in?
No.
Oh, but was Arizona State?
Probably.
If I'm asking that question, they gotta be, right? Yeah, they were. They definitely were.
What happened to him?
They lost.
Exactly.
What happened to LSU in the playoff? Oh, that's right. That's right.
Kelly's an overrated head coach. We want Coach O back.
You guys can't, you guys don't deserve Coach O.
Coach O sitting on his front porch in the bayou somewhere.
Do not deserve the guy. He was the perfect coach for LSU.
He's a big old Cajun dude that you can't even understand.
It was perfect and, and they were winning.
They were.
Joe Burrow.
Justin Jefferson, Jamar Chase.
Another quarterback you guys claim, Joe Burrow.
Hey.
Actually, I give you that one because he didn't play much at Ohio State. Jaden Daniels was good before he ever got to LSU.
But he wasn't considered a top draft pick.
He wasn't considered drop, top draft pick coming out of LSU.
He was the second pick of the draft.
Yeah.
He was supposed.
It was a stretch. I, 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 this is, this is actually controversial.
I think it is.
Because I don't feel like Jaden Daniels coming out of college, that there was very much hype about him at all. He was a like, okay, whatever. And he turned out to be a way better pick than ever expected.
Which I will give you that for sure. No one expected him to do what he's doing right now by any stretch of anyone. It would have been Caleb Williams and.
Right. You, you didn't expect him to be like, who all came out in that, in the, there was, it was a loaded quarterback.
Six quarterbacks, Caleb, twelve, thirteen picks. Caleb Williams, Jaden Daniels, Michael Pennix, Drake May, J.J. McCarthy and Bo Nix.
Yeah, well done, man. Good job.
Yeah, you found my, one of my things.
So. Right. I feel like he was like Bo Nix, Jaden Daniels.
He was, he was above them for sure. He was, he was in the.
Above them. That was one person I mentioned.
He was firmly, I thought you implied J.J. McCarthy with Bo Nix, but he was firmly in this like second tier category. Caleb Williams was in his own little thing. Then in that second tier was easily like Drake May and Jaden Daniels and those two were the toss up.
I third tier. Let's go four tiers.
Who's in the fourth then?
I'm, I'm biased, okay? This is a biased thing, but.
Bo Nix up there?
Nope, no. Bo Nix and JJ, fourth tier.
Fair.
Third tier Drake May. He was another guy that was overrated coming, he was over, he was overhyped coming out. Drake May was.
You think so? I, I agree frankly, especially with where he went to college.
Yeah. And Jaden Daniel was, was not, I don't know that he's overhyped, but I don't even think he deserved to win the Heisman.
He, he had a heck of a season.
Yeah, and they won a bunch of games.
They, they, they had a decent year.
Right. What he's doing at Washington is way better than what he did at LSU.
Not denying that for sure.
So he, he was, he's a third tier. Caleb Williams. I don't, I feel like he was overrated coming out. I always felt like he was overrated, but if we're going to put him at a tier all by himself, then Pennix is at a tier just below him. Pennix was not overrated.
Pennix was injury concerns. That was his.
He didn't get injured in the last two years.
No, but that was, that was the big concern.
That was the, that was the only concern is injury. It wasn't performance because.
Everyone likes to just say, cause he was what, twenty four? He was an old prospect or whatever.
He ball, he ball, he balled out more than almost any of those older QBs.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Jaden Daniels and Caleb Williams, and this is, this is not a doc, okay? So understand, but Jalen, Jaden Daniels and Caleb Williams, if you took away their legs, they were not, they're not as effective passers. And I understand that that plays into their game, but Pennix is just a pure passer dude. The guy is just, he just throws a ball and it's beautiful. I think he's in, if Caleb Williams has to be like the.
I'm not saying he is now. I'm saying coming into the draft.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Going into the draft, if he has to be in a tier by himself, then Pennix was right below him. And then you had Jaden Daniels and Drake May in a third tier and you had.
McCarthy and Nix.
And a fourth tier.
I will agree with that largely, except I would put Pennix, May and Daniels in the same tier.
I, I wouldn't. There, I don't think May and Pennix can be in the same tier.
I, I can.
I think you would have to move Jaden Daniels to the second tier. May is just not on the same tier as Pennix.
He was drafted purely off of potential.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, apparently.
Still time, but well, I don't know that it worked well.
He only started half the year, but it wasn't a bad half of the year.
Didn't produce wins.
Patriots had a horrible team around him too, but.
Oh yeah, that was not on our agenda.
Yeah, we just swung that one. So anyways.
So about, about the Gulf of America.
Yeah, back to Trump's first day as a president yesterday. He issued a ton of executive orders.
Yeah.
As we were talking earlier, he pardoned over fifteen hundred people that were involved, nonviolent people that were involved in the January sixth riots and affair, that whole situation. He withdrew us.
From the WHO?
The World Health Organization. He, I'm going to get back to this one in a second. He issued a declaration of a national emergency and so he's able to deploy the military to the southern border. That's something that everyone expected was happening, declared a national energy crisis. He wants to try to cut off birthright citizenship for children of non-citizens. That, that'll be an, that can't be something that's an executive order because there's like fourteenth amendment protections to that. So that'll be an interesting battle he has with that one. He took us out of the Paris Climate Accords. That's a big one for the US.
Sounds like we're joining Iran and like three other countries, not in it.
China and Russia or something.
No, it's not those. There's.
He repeated, repealed obviously a num, a ton of Biden's executive orders, whether it be, yeah, the electric car mandate, a ton of different energy.
Some of the executive orders that Biden was putting in at the end, just to make statements. Probably repealed those.
Yeah. And he had a, one of the interesting ones was he put a halt on all hiring in the federal government. That's not like military related kind of thing.
How does that affect him? That has to be a caveat for himself too.
For Trump?
Yeah, because he has to hire staff.
I would imagine unless they come with him and they're just, I know there were a couple of exceptions.
Department of Homeland Security isn't hired yet.
That's true. And same with, I mean, look how many people.
Just go through all the appointments and, and then they have to build out staffs.
I know there was a couple of exceptions for it, obviously with the military, and then there was a couple others. I don't remember the others off the top of my head.
No more. Well, actually USPS isn't part of the federal government, is it? So, so I was trying to make a point of that. Yeah, interesting. Okay, keep going.
That he established Doge, the Department of.
But that's not how it was supposed to be.
No, it was, and guess what?
Vivek is not a part of it.
That's what I wanted to talk about. He is apparently going to be trying to run for the governorship of Ohio in twenty six. O-H-I-O. I think he'll win.
I, buddy, I don't, no idea.
I'm interested to see who runs against him. I bet Sherrod Brown, the Democrat, longtime Senator of Ohio that just lost, I guarantee, I would almost guarantee he runs for that.
Yeah. I mean, that Ohio, their governor is typically Republican.
And they've been trending red for a long, long time.
But they're not, they're not strong, if Vivek is a strong Republican, they're not necessarily very, like John Kish or whatever, ran for president. Like he was a good guy. He was solid, but he wasn't like.
He was a lot more moderate.
Right.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah. So it'll be, and.
But they also elected J.D. Vance against a very moderate, relatively popular Congressman Tim Ryan.
Yeah. Vivek, I don't even know if he's, he might be more moderate than, I, I have no idea. Like he's very strong on spinning, you know?
Yeah, that's one of his big things.
But overall, I don't know where he's, he's at.
He's obviously, he's for the H one B visas and stuff. Him and Musk came out for that, which, I don't know. That'll be an interesting one. We're going to follow that one. See how that plays in the next year.
I would even go so far, since we're on the subject of national politics here at Minot Talk.
Well, the whole subject of our Minot Talk is happening at five thirty tonight, so.
City council got delayed. Um, I don't even know that Trump is that strong a Republican.
No, no, this is, I won't argue that. He's not a strong fiscal conservative by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, but like even on, I don't know, like there's some stuff that he's strong, but there's other stuff that he's not. I don't know.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, even beyond conservative, physically, but right, this year he'll be, or this term, he'll be more physically responsible than he was last year.
Well, by just default, COVID won't happen again.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're going and establishing Doge.
Yeah, in theory, that's going to cut out a lot of fat, right?
Right. In theory, I mean, if it goes nowhere, then.
Also, I have a hot take on that for later. One of the couple last things, he wants to halt, obviously put an order out to halt a lot of the DEI programs.
Yeah, go ahead and say it.
Directed the White House to identify and end them within the government as well.
Order declaring what? What was the order declaring?
Oh yeah, I skipped that one. An order, he also exists, this one will be an interesting one too, for how it'll play out because it's, he issued an order declaring that the federal government only recognized two sexes, male and female. I'm, I, I don't know how that'll play out. I think it should be fine. I don't know why it would have any troubles going through. I just.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll be an interest. Obviously though.
Did he get rid of pronouns too?
I know he wants to. I don't know. I, I think by specifying male and female, I think that implies getting rid of the pronouns.
Okay, interesting.
I believe at least with that. Then a couple of the other ones, he wants to obviously rename the Gulf of Mexico to the Gulf of America and Mount Denali to, back to Mount McKinley. Those ones are, I mean, just changing a map. That's not like a huge one, but.
But that's history, dude.
That is.
Gulf of America, that's history. I don't know how I feel about, like some people are like, yeah. And it's like, I don't know.
I could care, I'd go either way on those. The one that I have the most issue with was in his inauguration speech. He said he, and quote, wants to take back the Panama Canal and I don't like that. I feel that's excessively inflammatory and I, I, I feel it's imperialistic in its, in its.
Okay, should we have, ever have given it?
That's a whole different story. Maybe we shouldn't have, but we did. And it's been almost thirty years since we did. And I don't know how do we just take it back? Do we buy it back or do we?
Right. It really depends on how it's done. I agree at that part, but, but I feel like there's something that's interesting that I'm feeling from Trump. And some people say that I'm a Trump guy. I don't know. I don't, I honestly don't know where I stand on the guy as far as like, because he, he's so.
He can be all over the place at times.
And he's so cutting that you have, it's almost like you're one side or the other with him. It's hard to be in the middle. And I, so I guess if you're going to cut it like that, then I would fall into the, said that's for, I would.
For sure.
I think people would say that. I can understand that, can hear, hear me say that, but I don't, I'm not like M A mega guy and all that stuff. But one thing that I really feel from him going into this is a direct intent to go and prepare America for a global war in a modern setting.
Sure.
And to prepare it for future generations, honestly, when you talk about trying to acquire Greenland and you can get into the, again, like how is it done? All that stuff. Okay, but that part aside, that would be a really good thing.
I, I almost feel I would, I, I think acquire, the acquisition of Greenland would be easier and less dirty than the acquisition of the Panama Canal. In theory, if you get an effective referendum done in Greenland and they vote in favor of it, I wouldn't have enough, much opposition at that point.
So I'm going to talk about that in a minute, but I mean, Panama or Greenland has a lot of resources that are, that are going to be available. And then it's also a great place for your military as well. And so those are two things that helps America become independent from the rest of the world as far as what our needs are. Whether we continue to buy exports and whether we continue to play in the global economy is a secondary thing. You should still be able to, at the end of the day, provide for yourself. And if we can't provide for ourselves, then we're in a very difficult position as a country. And so I feel like that is something that is really huge. And the second thing is the Panama Canal. And how that cuts the shipping lanes and stuff like that, that like, that's a huge thing. And so you say you feel like it's more whatever, but when you have other countries coming in and playing ball down there, like come on, man. This is our part of the world. It is.
For sure.
It is. So you go, you go mess around and you do your stuff in Africa and stuff like that and we play some hardball over there. But you go and you go mess around with your side of the world and we're going to mess around on our side of the world. And, and I feel like there needs to, there's, whether we literally take ownership of the Panama Canal, that's something that I, I don't have an opinion on. That I'm not addressing.
Alternative thought here. Are you done? Do you have another?
I was just going to finish by saying, but creating some better relationship down there where we're getting, paying equal fare or less because of allies and I mean, are you kidding me? Like.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent on that end. We're getting hosed. I'm not denying.
Yeah, so you want, you want to go make friends with China? Okay, like, yeah, unbelievable.
So first to unpack.
There's a lot there.
In, in the same time period when the Panama, Panama Canal was being built in late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, there was a lot of discussion of where it was going to happen at. Panama obviously was where it was determined. One other place that got a lot of talk was Nicaragua. And just saying, what if that was revisited today? Obviously that would be a tens of billion dollar project that would probably risk thousands of lives. But also it would be a safer thing in today's day and age than it was, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago. But that's just a thought that maybe someone could try to explore that. Would, obviously that would be huge for the country of Nicaragua to have that happen there. Who knows who would fund? I, I know about four people that make up almost a trillion dollars of wealth that were sitting behind Trump at his inauguration yesterday. That could be a fantastic place to fund, you know, a new secondary Atlantic to Pacific Canal going through Central America. That would new, sorry, I'm getting off. All right. Aside from that.
You're great, dude. I was enjoying it.
I was getting a little worked up there.
Um, so, so like for perspective, according to National Library of Medicine, fifty-five thousand people were employed by the US for construction of, on the Panama Canal and fifty-six hundred died of injury and disease. So that's ten percent.
That's, yeah.
That's less than what Trump said.
Yeah. And honestly, that's less than I thought just off the top of my head.
So yeah, that's, that's according to this, perhaps there's something, and maybe there was a total number that was given out that included others that weren't American or something like that too.
When the French started maybe, but regardless even, I mean, you, you, you wouldn't have nearly those numbers in today's day and age.
Yeah, you definitely want to have the disease and with how concerned as it should be about safety on projects like that, it seems like.
So how about this? If Panama doesn't want to play ball with us, we say, okay, fine. Keep your shipping lanes. We're going to take all of our hundred billionaires and we're going to take the full financial power of the American government, go to Nicaragua and build. and we're gonna take the full financial power of the American government, go to Nicaragua and build a new canal.
Does, does China say we won't write the check for you?
Good. But that's, o- okay, here's a whole, so talk about oligarchy. How, what if America borrows from like Musk and them? What if they issue America a line of credit?
All right, so can you imagine?
Just a wildly hypothetical speculative world.
Crazy conversation. Can you imagine America borrowing from Musk specifically though?
Oh, it'd be so.
Only because of how, well, and it's not all, cuz I, I, I pick on Musk, but he's made a lot of money off the US.
Yeah.
So it'd be very ironic for him to be, is giving some money back. That way, loaning money back.
But at the same time, he would almost be paying himself at that point, cuz we'd still be doling him out in Congress.
And you better believe that if there was a canal of that size being built, he would definitely be involved.
Of course.
He couldn't help but be involved.
No, he wants to have his hands in everything at this point. And because of the wealth he has, he can. But so there's a wild, you know, side street on where that could end up going.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, right, I, that probably won't happen.
No, not at all.
I would say. Um, and China would probably still give money. If, if they didn't, then it's gonna be World War Three. It's, it's gonna be something major.
But I guess so on the further, the last little point on this, if by chance it were to happen where America takes back the Panama Canal, not financially, um, and it's through force, I just feel like that could be a bad precedent that could set, you know, forth things for China to be able to take back places like Taiwan.
Like Taiwan. Yeah, no, they're definitely, that has to be handled the right way, but it seems like there's ways for that to be handled the, uh, uh, relatively fair way.
Yeah, and at the bottom of it all, I fully agree, we are getting hosed on the deals going through the canal, like, no doubt about that.
Right, but, but this is my question with it.
Yes.
Why is it, why is it not, no, it's a new question. Why is that now a concern? Why did stuff like this get swept on the rug for years?
And now all of a sudden it becomes a hot button topic again.
Because once you get highlight, once it gets pointed out to the American people, you're like, dude, this is terrible. And, and I think mostly, and I'm probably wrong on this, but most like, mostly it'd be bipartisan. Like, no, this is actually not a good thing for us.
Like, just looking at the sheer numbers of it, it's.
If, if we're paying fair market price and then we're giving them X amount of money on top of it, then we can complain about the money that we're giving to a country on top of it. But as far as having business deals where we're just straight up losing money on the business deal, on the business side of the deal, that's pathetic. That is terrible. We can't be doing that.
No, that's not, that's not, it's not how good business is done, and it's not how the US should allow it to be.
For sure.
Manhandled in its own hemisphere.
It took, well, how long did it take for the canal to be built?
I mean, from its actual inception, I think it was in like the eighteen eighties to like, what, nineteen thirteen?
Wow.
There, there's my, that's my, it got finished under Wilson, I know that.
Yeah, that's crazy. Cuz how long would it take for us to build one now?
To even just say it took twenty years total, start to, when America started, it was like, you know, fif- ten to fifteen, but like.
Oh, I see, but so this is what some are saying, however, all right, the construction of the canal took ten years from nineteen oh four to nineteen fourteen, under the United States effort. However, earlier attempts by the French began in eighty-one, eighteen eighty-one and lasted until eighteen eighty-nine before they were abandoned due to engineering challenges and disease.
So there you go. So about eighteen years of total effort was put into it, but really about ten, eleven years of actual.
Right, so if they did it then that fast, then can we do it faster now?
So I know part of the reason why it was chosen to be Panama and not Nicaragua is because of the distances shorter in Panama. Um, but still, regardless, I would like to think that it could be done in a much shorter timeframe in today's day and age than back then. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot more of workers' conditions that are taken into account today than then, so you're gonna have.
You're gonna have greater fargear technology.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So I, I, I would say absolute worst case, it should be done in no longer than the, like, a ten year timeframe. But I think it should be closer to five.
That's a somewhat problem.
Getting someone to, as soon as.
But anyways, let's move on.
Should we talk about what might be happening in the town of Minot tonight?
Yeah, I think that'd be much more.
Podcast.
Much, much more applicable to what should be going on here.
We, we went down.
So five hours, what are we gonna talk about?
You know, it's gonna be, be a lot going on, especially some things coming back up from last, uh, the Planning Commission meeting. There was a few things that happened at that, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was, and.
What, what happened at that meeting?
The big, big thing that, um, we're gonna talk about is the new, the rezoning of a spot up on Northwest Minot for the potential use of a new micro hospital coming to town. And last, at that last Planning Commission, Trinity brought out all the big guns, bringing their CEO, uh, heads of departments, some doctors all out to the Planning Commission meeting to try and discuss why they're in opposition of a new micro hospital coming to town. So I can only imagine that if they did that at the Planning Commission meeting, they're going to be at the city council meeting in at least the same amount of force, if not even larger.
Yes.
And so on top of that, I feel like you're gonna have, this is obviously far more high profile than this Planning Commission meeting. So I think you're gonna have more people, uh, local residents that probably will come try to speak at the open hearing as well.
Yeah.
I, I could see this being the majority of the meeting going to that, uh, agenda item, frankly.
Kinda love it.
Or I'm going to be wrong and.
No, you're right. You're right on this one.
I feel like I gotta be right.
Whi- which is crazy, and I, the reason why that we're hearing so much talk about it right now is because basically, once this is rezoned, there's no city opportunity for this to be stopped. Just like there was a surgical center that was placed across town. We never heard about that at a city council or even at a planning commission, because it was just fair zoning. We were good to go.
Yeah, they just opened the facility and re-did, remodeled the facilities and they were good to go.
And I think that's what is important to be looked at by us as citizens. Okay, you have Trinity that fairly enough is very passionate about how this should play out.
Sure.
Right, but as citizens, what we should be looking at is, should this be zoned the way that the, the developers requesting or not? And if it's all right for the zoning change, then we should be fine with it. Are we fine with a new hospital coming to town? That's a separate question, and fair market should be able to.
Determine that.
Answer it, yeah. But if we go and we say, we don't like this company coming to town, so we're not gonna allow a zoning change, but to the next company, we will. First off, it puts the city at a great risk of something called a lawsuit. Um, but also is terrible for development, and that's the exact thing that, at least here at Minot Talk, we've been passionate against, is saying, when are we gonna open Minot to development again, where everyone has a fair chance and a Walmart can get built on the north side of town?
For sure.
Even if that is detrimental to a North Dakota business. And that in itself is a very deep question that, you know, we don't want big box stores rolling it, and I would, I would side with that. I would be, yeah, I don't want big box.
Speaking, no, we don't.
And so then I get to determine my purchase. I get to win that battle with my, where I purchase things.
Exactly. You can pay with your wallet or vote with your wallet at that point.
Exactly, and if we didn't support that Walmart, eventually it'd have to close down.
Yeah, for sure. And I think the other big thing to consider is when you're looking through some of the memos on this, it, they're talking about the outlook of Minot into that, what, twenty forty, twenty fifty timeframe, where they have some future zoning initiatives made. And the area that this is in is in one of those places that's expected to be zoned differently in the next, you know, twenty, thirty years. So if it's already in our eventual plans to change, I, I don't know how much of an issue it should be to theoretically change it right now. Like, right now, it's a, it's a wheat field pretty much, right across the, on the northwest side of the bypass, exactly.
We talked about that, like, the things that they would do would be so good, get the.
The multitude of opportunities and possibilities that could come with that are endless.
Yeah, right.
Especially up on here on North Hill side of town.
Right, for sure. Uh, some, there was a, Marvin Nelson pointed out that in Grand Forks, I believe it was something similar happened. And eventually the nonprofit hospital had to buy it out. And again, I don't know that that, that isn't the end of the world either. Forcing Trinity to do something like that, if they find that successful, ultimately, would it be good for there to be an emergency room of some type on North Hill, closer to the base and closer to that side of town? Answer that question.
That's exactly. Would people on base prefer to have that option as well on top of what obviously the facilities they have on base, which are, you know, solid veteran facilities? But for the multitude of people that live in town that work on base, this is a whole different opportunity at this stage.
If you're in Glenburn, what, what do you want?
Exactly. If you're in anywhere north of town, between here and Botno, there's.
And we talk about how we are, you know, a, a great community partner when it comes to paying for bridges in Bel Air, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, this is also a good opportunity to be a community partner as well.
Exactly, and start to build up the future, cuz one thing that I, I don't know if I've pointed it out or if someone else did, but I know I've talked about it with other people, is Minot was easily able to sustain two hospitals thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And obviously, Saint Joe's was eventually bought out by Trinity.
Right.
And that was a deal that was in the works for quite a while at one point in time, but if they could do it in the eighties, why can't we do it in the twenty thirties?
Right, right. So that's, that's something that if city does not approve that, they better have a really good reason why. I see that passing, honestly. I, I really don't see that not passing.
Like, obviously, if it passes, it still doesn't guarantee that the hospital even comes.
Just the zoning.
But the zone changes, and even if it, it, it opens up possibilities for different things to start going up in that area.
Yeah, right, yeah, it does, it does. And at the Planning Commission, there was one that mentioned that this isn't the first time someone has looked into that area. It is, it is an area of interest for this type of, for this type of development, which would require the zoning change, not necessarily another hospital.
Cuz it's right off the northwest side of town, right off that bypass.
Yeah, it'd be a great place for like, a Red Robin.
Yeah, any kind of commercial place, a Costco, a restaurant of any kind, a Chick-fil-A, you name it. It would be an area where it would be great. You could have.
Chick-fil-A would be good there.
Offset road off of there, where you can turn off, get off the bypass.
I wanna be broke.
I know, right?
Stop. I wanna Chick-fil-A though, but if it's that close to my house, I'd get broke. I'd be broke, yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
That's fair.
That needs to be on this. Chick-fil-A has to be on the south side of town.
Fair, so that way, when you, you can just hop on the bypass and go really.
No, I won't, cuz it's like a ten minute drive. That's, that's like, so like, if you go and.
Imagine telling someone in like Minneapolis.
Listen to what I'm about to say, buddy. If you go and you compare, like, there's a legend, you know how you see legends? So our ten minute drive equates to Minneapolis's sixty minute drive.
Okay, that's fair.
That's how that works.
I'll give you that, I'll give you that.
It's a ten minute drive? No way.
When I worked at the rental car industry at the airport, one thing I would say to people is if you're driving for more than fifteen to twenty minutes in town, you're probably lost.
Yeah, exactly.
Cuz I mean, it's, it's Minot.
Right.
Fun times. Got, I think there's like a few, there's a few different planning, uh, commission items that are on this one, but obviously, that's the big one.
I have a question for you. Are you gonna start a new business that would involve tearing down trees?
Me? No, I'm not, but I saw an interesting consent item in there that it's probably, you know, just completely normal. But I just saw the dollar figure and I was like, huh, it's interesting.
How much was it?
So in the, there were fifteen consent items total, and one of them, there's a tree, uh, that needs to be torn down with some construction stuff on the, on Sixteenth Street Southwest. Apparently, it costs forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars to tear the tree down.
It's one big tree, man.
That's what the city, and it might be.
So if that, if it costs that much money, how much money does it cost to fall a redwood?
Gosh, I don't even wanna know.
Obviously, this is in town. That's a different thing. If it's in the forest.
I'm sure the tree cutting equipment up there, it takes effort and probably have to block off some road stuff. I'm sure it makes sense, but I don't know. I saw almost fifty grand to cut down a tree and I was like, man.
I was like, man, that's how much it's, yeah, that's moving on.
One other one, they've got like, uh, four agenda items, um, so the mid-continent franchise fees are changing a little bit. This was the only really interesting one I saw, so like, they used to and still will kind of offer like some what, public and educational and government entities can arrange for cable services independently. Um, affected parties have been notified of this recommendation, so like, different schools that can get great, um, get free cable through Midco. Uh, I know Surrey was one of them. They will still be eligible, but now because of how they're changing, uh, the city staff is, or the, the city's going to probably eliminate the in-kind services, so the city doesn't have to pay any kind of outside fee for it.
Nice.
Yes.
Very good.
And there's the Macadex, the Minot Area Chamber of Economic Development Committee.
This is the one you're looking forward to?
Has a yearly wrap-up report for their end of twenty twenty-four, and that'll be.
Big question for you.
What's that?
What's your hot take?
My hot take? My hot take is that, uh, I don't believe Doge will last more than a year. I think it will be dead within a year. Elon will get bored and move on, and it will have no teeth after he's gone.
This guy.
I know.
This guy, which you don't, which you forgot about Doge. That's supposed to be done in just over a year.
I know, but I think it will be done in a year, within a year, because Elon figures out that the government won't let him just start slashing stuff and Trump can executive order it through. And so all of the sudden, when he deals with the process that legislation takes, he gets bored, gets out of there, and all of a sudden, the new replacement of Doge, who isn't even Vivek, um, has no teeth at that point, and it is no longer have any form of oversight outside of.
Yeah, some would say that's a hot take. Someone would be like, yeah, agreed with you, right?
Be a lukewarm take today.
It's a lukewarm one, but this is, this is my question to you. I'm gonna counter it, which we know we do. We know we like.
Like to, yeah, get a little bit here.
Yeah, Lewis test. These things. So does Musk go try to get his stuff done? Doesn't work out, get upset, and then try to influence the, in a fair way, try to influence the uh, midterm elections.
Fair means pumping millions of dollars into their campaigns.
Which is, you can go and you can.
Fair, you can start a political action committee and, yeah, it's fine.
People were trying to say that by some of the remarks that Trump made, that he was, that Elon Musk was actually messing with the computer systems and stuff like that and affecting voter votes and stuff like that.
That's a different.
That's, if he did that, that's terribly wrong, and that's not what I'm talking about.
I, yeah, no, without a doubt. But I could definitely.
Do you, so do you see him trying to go?
Yeah, I see him trying to initiate his ideas, see him failing, and then I think you probably make a good point. I could definitely see him trying to influence the midterms and trying to push people that would want to be, get a lot of the ideas that he has and that Trump might still have at that point, passed into con- and into effect at that point.
Right. I mean, when you, so, and I know you're picking on him a little bit by saying he gets bored and moves on to something else. Cuz that's what, how he feels right now. But also remember how much time he's, has spent in Tesla.
Yeah, undoubtedly.
It's crazy the amount of time he's spent in Tesla, and even consider what he has done at Twitter.
Yeah.
Or now X.
The, the first like six months after he bought that, he took full control and full reign of it.
And so, and that's kind of one of your points that you're making, like, he can't do that here, so. But he, like, he did take full control and full reign, and so there was that aspect. But there's also been this slow and steady aspect about it too. There have been two sides that we've seen, you know?
Yeah, the long game, the turnaround of what it's become now.
Basically, my point is, he does have the ability to play the long game, even though it feels like he's very, right now, it feels like he's very like, direct, get just immediate. He does have the ability to play the long gun, game.
That's, that's reasonable. I, I, he definitely does, and look at SpaceX and how it's progressed as well.
Right.
Um, he definitely has it in him. I just don't think that he will have it in him for this one.
Yeah, all right, that's fair.
Do you have a hot take today or you, you?
I think I threw out like three hot takes.
You did throw some fun ones out there earlier.
So I'm trying to remember what I said, though. That's what's scary. What's scary is I don't know what I've said on air.
I think you, you, you were talking, one, one was.
Trump, that's the one that I wanna recall.
Okay, the Trump one, cuz I know one was in, like, when we were talking about Panama. Was it, oh, was it to do with the TikTok one?
I didn't say anything about TikTok. So, but I think Trump's wrong on that.
Yeah, I was, I, I actually, I meant to bring this up, and I think we skipped it on my, my bad.
So here's, here's a hot take for you, and I'm gonna steal what somebody else said.
Do it.
Democrats are gonna try to manipulate Trump by getting Trump to be opposed to something, then joining him. So then he flips his mind.
Ooh.
Cuz that's what's happened with TikTok, perhaps.
Yeah, no, that's the thing. Like, that's the interesting thing with the whole TikTok one, is that this is something that wasn't like executive ordered in the first place. This is something that was, this was a law and decree passed by Congress and signed by the president. So this is one of those things that he, he can give it a little extra grace, but to actually fully repeal that declaration from Congress is going to be interesting. I'm not a hundred percent sure how that one will end up playing out.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, with TikTok specifically, what about the government gets fifty percent ownership?
Not like that.
Yeah, I think that's terrible.
Yeah, I would not like that at all. I don't, I, I hope, I can, I.
I, I need to hear more about what, like, hi- his point is of it and his goal is.
I objectively don't like TikTok, but I also feel, yeah, I feel like them banning TikTok opens up a door of, of whole Pandora's box of possibilities.
Honestly, I just go back to what was talked about with our council people around the time of the million dollar land purchase next to Public Works.
Sure, yeah.
Forget what the dish was called. But, but the point was.
We first started doing this, yeah.
We are not here to be investors.
Kemper.
Kemper, yep, Kemper dish. We're not here to be investors. We're here to.
Facilitate.
Yeah, so there, the US government is not there to buy TikTok. And then.
Resell it for a profit to someone else.
They would wanna do.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's the government's job at all.
Right.
To.
Unless if somehow it paid out dividends to its people.
That would be.
Still, I, I, I really don't like the idea. I'm just going down a, a like.
You're starting, so we're just going all the way with it at this point.
Because it, so if it's the people's money, right?
Yeah.
Right, they pay taxes. Right? They pay taxes.
Theory, they're getting a kickback, like shareholders.
Right, so if we're gonna buy TikTok, then we should be getting, we should be, the government should not be getting the payouts from this.
Should be the citizens, cause we're the ones that are funding said government.
Yeah, so if you're gonna start making investments in the, then that should be going back to the people, not to the government, cause it's not a business.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
And that's probably the exact reason why they shouldn't be buying TikTok in the first place. But he wasn't talking about buying it. He was talking about we're so nice, we led you back in the US, gives fifty percent ownership. That was almost more the road that he is going down. Which is also interesting in itself. If you did take over ownership, which is a whole nother discussion, then you could sell it very quickly, get.
At least your money back, if not more.
Well, they wouldn't be having any money and basically.
At that point, yeah.
Yeah, so they would just make money off of it. I don't know. I, I don't love, I don't love all the stuff that's going on there with TikTok.
Yeah, it is far too too sticky of a slope, I think, or slippery of a slope to.
Yeah, so interesting stuff, man. Alright, well, city council tonight, five thirty.
You betcha. We'll have some kind of article up tomorrow. I'll drop some kind of a very brief recap on it.
Yeah, that'll be good.
You betcha.
Be sure to stay around, subscribe, become part of the decoding community, go to mydecoding.com or you'll find interesting articles, including this week, most likely, there's a very high chance that this week, we're gonna have an update on the Duncey debacle.
You betcha. Expect if not a interview, at least an article to be coming out this week on it.
Bigs, big ideas happening.
Yes, big things. Make sure you stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Make sure you like and subscribe so that way you don't miss out. Turn on that notification bell. Is that what the cool kids say?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Ring the bell for notifications. So you hear from us at all times when we go live.
Boom, we'll see ya.